I'd like to call the regular session meeting order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Romanek.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Casabun.
Here.
Do we have a pastor in the room by any chance? Oh, please come up to the podium. May we please rise for invocation followed by the slithered flag?
Most gracious heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight. We're so thankful, Lord God, that you have invited us in and that you tell us to ask what we need. And so, Father, tonight, I ask, Lord God, that your presence would be manifested in this place, that your wisdom and your knowledge and your direction and guidance would be with our commissioners of this city tonight as they make crucial decisions for the people of Millville. Father, I thank you that we can call upon you anytime, in the precious name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Public comment on agenda items only. I would like to move that and I will go to presentations first.
Yes, Mayor, we have the swearing in of a firefighter.
Proceed.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chief John Wetstein with the Millville Fire Department. And I just want to say that fire departments across the nation are full of history and traditions. And tonight, it is my pleasure to bring a lot of tradition into the Millville Fire Department. My grandfather was the fire chief, and it was special for me when I was sworn in as fire chief in March. My dad was a deputy chief. I'd like to call my brother, Patrick Wetstein, up, who was a current member of the fire department with me. And we're going to call up Patrick Wetstein II, who is getting sworn in. Patrick is going to be a fourth-generation firefighter with the city of Millville. And everybody always says, you know, when you come in, someone has big shoes to fill. And when, you know, he finished out the list and everything came out that he was going to get hired to replace someone else that left, I went to him and I pointed to his, pointed to my chest and I said, you know, you don't have shoes to fill. You have a name to uphold. But I couldn't be more proud of him, proud of my brother, my father, my grandfather. And, uh, welcome, Patrick.
If I can, before we get to swearing in done, not much I can say. Thank you, Patrick, for carrying on your family name. I've got to know you, you're not new to the fire department. He's been a volunteer for plenty of time. Top on the list. I see you working in the field. Thank you very much, especially for carrying on the Wetstein name. Thank you, bud.
I state your name.
I, Patrick Wetstein.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the New Jersey, the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially and justly.
And partially and justly.
Perform all the duties of.
Perform all the duties of.
The office of firefighter.
The office of firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Patrick Wetstein II. I know a lot of your family members and, you know, another long-lasting family name in the city of Millville that you know the weight of and the city knows the weight of to, and your uncle, I assume, that you will do a good job as well as all the residents of the city of Millville know that you will continue to do a good job in the Millville Fire Department. So, thank you for your service to the city.
One short thing, sir.
Go ahead.
Folks that are sitting here, as everybody's leaving, you saw the firefighters that came in with their turnout gear on. That's your duty crew for till tomorrow morning. And they came here to support their new firefighter from an accident scene. That's why they were dressed in their turnout gear. Just wanted to let you know that.
All right, and I will now proceed with public comment on agenda items only. If anybody from the public would like to comment on agenda items, please go to the podium, state your name, and address your concerns on the public, on agenda items. Ms. Kears, go ahead.
Patricia Kears, I have a question on Resolution 19-9. The building or that property on, at Airwork. I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, that we're selling it for $125,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
I would just like to say that I know the building there is old. I'm not an engineer, so I have no idea what the condition is or what has to be done, if it can be rehabbed. But the assessed value is $1,166,200. And as taxpayer, I'd like to know why we are selling it for $125,000. $125,000, yeah. And it's almost eight acres of ground.
Let me answer that now, Mayor.
Go ahead.
You looked at the building, you realized the state of disrepair. The cost of repair is going to be in excess of what its assessed value is. The water pipes are all shot, the electric is all missing, and I think we got an estimate to replace the roof that was over a million dollars. So, that's the reason why.
Well, I just want to say that I don't think it's fair that the taxpayers are subsidizing the demolition of the building. I think that price should be higher.
Nobody said the building was getting demolished.
I know that, but I'm saying, I think $125,000 for almost eight acres of ground is too low. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else, I will close public comment on agenda items only. Bills. Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second motion.
We have a motion second and bill payment. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes. Minutes.
Yes, we need a motion to approve the minutes for work session and regular meeting minutes dated September 2nd, 2025, and work session, closed session, and regular meeting minutes dated September 16th, 2025.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion second on approval of the work session, regular session meeting, meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2025, and work session, closed session, regular session meetings dated September 16th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes. Positions and letters.
There are none, Mayor.
Reports of commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to make a motion to receive and file the police and fire department EMS reports for the month of September of 2025.
Second motion.
We have a motion to receive and file the police and fire department reports for the month of September 2025. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Okay, with that, as you see, we just filled a spot. Just so people know, we did not lose an employee to the city with the replacement of a firefighter. We had a police officer moved from the police department to the fire department as a paid firefighter, and he has elected to go back. He is back and working on the street as a police officer. And, as was stated, Patrick II was top on his list, on the county list. And, uh, not sure, but I think he's been a volunteer for almost five years now. So, uh, he knows the department, he's worked with the department for years, and, uh, he's going to be a great asset to the department. With that being said, just a little bit of numbers on the, on the reports for public safety last month. The police received 3,418 calls for assistance last month. Fire, 116 calls last month. EMS, 695 calls. Everybody's working, folks. We're hoping to have the ambulance that the commission approved the purchase of. Within a week or so, I'm safe to say, Chief, we'll be here. Hopefully, it's here tomorrow from the shop from getting wrapped. And, uh, then it has to be set up with the stretcher and all the equipment, and it'll be inspected, and that will be on the road. Another advancement in public safety. With that, Mayor, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Sui.
Yes, so on Saturday, September 27th, we had the annual baby show at Corson Park. I had the privilege of judging this show, along with Ms. Christina Campbell. And there were some hard decisions to make there. A lot of kids to choose from, and it made it difficult. But I want to congratulate the new little Miss Millville, Roman Rogers, and little Mr. Millville, Noah Brown. I want to thank everyone that participated in the show. Over the next few weeks, we'll be going through the parks, completing our fall cleanups. We encourage the public at any time to call or email us with issues. We appreciate your input. Upcoming events, if you're going to decorate your home for Halloween, and I notice many have already, we're business, consider entering our annual Halloween decorating contest. You can sign up with that by calling 825-7000, extension 7394, or email recreation@millvillenj.gov. Judging will take place between October 24th and October 26th, and winners will be announced on October 28th. Good luck to everybody that joins that. The Holly City Walking Club will start back up at Lakeside on Tuesday, October 14th, and will take place every Tuesday and Thursday from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. You must be 18 or older to participate. And remember, if the school is closed that day, then there's no walking. I want to thank the Board of Education for approving our application to once again hold that event. Mystery on High will take place on Friday, October 17th, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. along High Street. Come and join in the spooky fun. There'll be live bands, face painting, psychic greetings, and a lot more. Lastly, in October, is our annual pumpkin extravaganza on Saturday, October 25th, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Pond Street between Second and Third Streets. There will be pony rides, trunk-or-treat, pumpkin decorating, and other spooky fun activities. Progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Casabun.
Okay, from streets and roads, 11 appliances have been collected, 69 tires collected, 4,375 bags of loose leaves and grass clippings collected. We issued 228 street sweeping tickets have been written. 478 electronic waste were received. We repaired a sinkhole repair at Six and Gareth, and that's been completed. Ivory Road and Elfin Place have been graded and stoned. Picked up 285 tons of brush. Brush collection is over for 2025. If you have brush and you want to dispose of it, take it to the compost at 999 Cedar Street. And they're there Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, 7:15 to 2:45. Loose leaf collection starts November the 1st to December the 31st. Residents can start placing their leaves out the last week of October. Recycling, in September, we replaced 32 damaged carts, six missing or stolen carts, delivered 19 residential units that previously did not have any. Nine carts were purchased by residents. 78 notices of violation were issued in September. Zero tickets were issued. We received a second group that's in the process of signing up for Adopt a Road program. Once their application is completed and approved, the signs for their road will be ordered and installed. We have purchased cigarette butt receptacles from Terra Cycle. They will be installed at several various city-owned locations to replace the existing receptacles that keep getting vandalized or dumped. We do recycle the butts, believe it or not, and it's free for us. The e-waste, oil, antifreeze, and rechargeable battery drop-off at 15th Street will be closed on Monday, the 13th of October, for the Columbus Day holiday. If there's any individual groups that would like to adopt a road, a neighborhood, or a drain, please contact Chris Finch with Recycling Clean Communities at 825-7000, extension 7612. I just have a quick thing that I would like to let all the residents know. Please do not throw out any rechargeable batteries in your trash or your recycle. We had a fire in one of the trash trucks on 10 Sixth because there was a rechargeable battery in someone's trash. Luckily, the ACUA was able to push part of that load out of the truck and put the fire out with extinguishers that are carried on the truck. All dry cell rechargeable batteries weighing less than 11 pounds can be taken to 416 South 15th for disposal. Wet cell batteries or batteries that weigh more than 11 pounds should be taken to the junkyard or contact your manufacturer for disposal options. Thank you. That's all I have. Clean that city up.
Thank you, Commissioner Casabun.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Watson.
We'll start off with the ordinance on the first reading. I just wanted to bring up that it's a salary ordinance. This was reviewed by the city and agreed upon with Council 18 as the attempt to simplify the salary ordinance to positions currently in use or that may be in use in the future.
These are for basically optionally positions, right?
Correct. Fulton Street paving was completed on October 3rd from Park Avenue to the project limits. The punch lift is under review now. The punch list is under review now. The engineering department and myself would like to thank the water department for the water meter upgrades replacement that are currently in progress. We've seen great improvement. The water utility staff is working directly with the installer to resolve issues and assist in coordination and planning. To date, there's 1,700 meters that have been installed. Part to the start of the next cycle, they'll be working on commercial meters. For the solids waste, the watering project was under review by the trust, and there was revisions that needed to be made. That project has been resubmitted to the trust.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Watson. I'd like to remind everybody that planning board will be Tuesday, October 14th, in lieu of the holiday, October 13th. So, Tuesday, the 14th, for the upcoming planning board. On September 17th, I attended the South Jersey Mayor's Dinner. It was hosted by Gloucester and Camden Counties Mayor's Association, and Cumberland County was invited. I was the only Cumberland County mayor to be there. As I sat there and watched the people flow in, I did not know a single soul in the audience. I made friends with Newfield Mayor and Business Administrator, as also the mayor of Pittman, and the mayor of Collingwood, New Jersey. Apparently, Collingwood has lots of eating options and very good-reviewed restaurants there as I was meeting with the deputy mayor. So, you learn to make friends in government, and, but it was very eye-opening to see that. And I checked my email, and it went out to every South Jersey, Cumberland County mayor, and I was the only municipality to show up. But it was a eye-opening experience with the presentations that were given that night, and also creating and making new connections as well. I'm sure Mr. Horne will talk about the Cut International Film Festival that happened in September. It was a wonderful turnout on that evening for the showing of how the Levoi was and what happened to the Levoi throughout its history and the new bringing of what the Levoi is today and for what it provides. So, I don't know if there's any areas that the, that short film will be showed more publicly in the future, but it was a great, great turnout that night, and I assume for the whole Cut International Film Festival. Ordinances in the second reading.
Ordinance for second reading, item number one. Bond ordinance authorizing various capital improvements and acquisitions, appropriating $2,030,000 to pay the cost thereof, authorizing the issuance of $1,928,500 of bonds to finance the appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the bonds.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second for ordinance in the second reading, item number one. We're now open public hearing on this. If anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance, please go to the podium, state your name, address your concerns, and please limit the concerns to five minutes. Seeing no one, I will close public hearing on ordinance for the second reading, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Ordinance for second reading, item number two. An ordinance of the city of Millville and the county of Cumberland adopting amendment to the redevelopment plan entitled James R. Hurley Industrial Park Redevelopment Plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 40A:12A-1.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second for ordinance in the second reading, item number two. I'll now open the public hearing for this ordinance. If anybody from the public would like to come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Comments from commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Ordinance for second reading, item number three. An ordinance amending ordinance 18-2025, an ordinance approving an agreement of sale that would authorize the city of Millville to convey a deed of easement to the state of New Jersey.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second for ordinance in the second reading, item number three. We'll now open public hearing for this ordinance. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance, please go to the podium. Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Comments of commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes. Ordinances in the first reading.
Ordinance for first reading, item number one. An ordinance amending the salary ordinance.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second for ordinance in the first reading, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Ordinance for first reading, item number two. An ordinance amending Millville Code Chapter 39A Motor Vehicle and Traffic Regulation Schedules, Section 17 Parking Prohibited at All Times to Remove the Designation Therein of the East Side of Columbia Avenue from Vine Street to Broad Street.
Make the motion with an amendment to change the streets from Columbia Avenue from Dock to Broad.
Second motion.
We have a motion second with the amendment noted. On ordinance in the first reading, item number two. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes. Resolutions.
Resolution item number one. Resolution to award a non-parent open contract to Gale Corporation.
Make a motion. And with, I do have certification of funds in the amount of $31,250 signed by our CFO, Tricia McGahey.
It's even in bold, too.
I don't want to spend any money.
And you're, you're on top of it.
Second motion.
We have a motion.
And you said second very fast. I think you were trying to spend the money.
We have a motion second, resolution item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number two. Resolution authorizing special assessments due to demolition on fire-damaged property, 271 Nav Avenue.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion second on resolution item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number three. Resolution authorizing special assessments due to demolition on fire-damaged property, 321 South Forest Street.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion second on resolution item number three. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number four. Resolution requesting approval for the insertion of special item of revenue funded from the state of New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for the Millville UEZ Fiscal Year 2026 Marketing and Promotions Project.
Make a motion on resolution item number four.
Second motion.
We got a motion and second on resolution item number four. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number five. Resolution requesting approval for the insertion of a special item of revenue funded from the state of New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for the Millville UEZ Fiscal Year 2026 Administrative Budget.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second on resolution item number five. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number six. Resolution appointing the Bill Horan Media Group, part of Artsy South Jersey, Inc. for social media, advertising, and print media on behalf of the city of Millville.
Move the resolution, I have certification of funds in the amount of $35,000.
Second motion.
We have a motion second on resolution item number six. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number seven. Resolution authorizing tax and utility adjustments.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second on resolution item number seven. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number eight. Resolution of the city of Millville and the county of Cumberland designating 25 Airwork LLC as a redeveloper and authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with redevelopment of property identified on the tax maps of the city as Block 125.01, Lot 13, more commonly known as 25 Airwork Street.
Make a motion on resolution item number eight.
Second motion.
We have a motion second on resolution item number eight. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Resolution item number nine. Resolution of the City of Millville and the County of Cumberland, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and purchase and sale agreement for property identified as portion of Block 125.01, Lot 13, on the tax maps of the city with 25 Airwork LLC.
Make a motion. Second motion.
We have a motion second for resolution number nine. Any comments?
Yes. So, a little history on this building, 25 Airwork Street. Approximately 2013, 2014, somewhere in there when I was in office before, we had had an agreement of sale with Intex Corporation, if any of you remember that company out at the airport. And that was for a price of $450,000. They were subsequently urged to apply for tax credits, and I'm not going to get into all that, but as part of that, they had to look around to different areas to qualify for those tax credits. So they looked to Galloway, and they moved to Galloway. So we lost all business. This building has been empty for over a decade. It's been off the tax rolls for over a decade. It has continued to deteriorate, and it's a liability to the city. It is constantly broken into. The interior is destroyed. Part of the roof is inside the building. As I said before, the water lines are destroyed. The electrical is all gone, stolen. So I would urge you guys to vote to sell this and get it back on the tax rolls and get it repaired.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
Resolution item number 10. Resolution to appoint an acting construction official.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second on resolution item number 10. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes. New business.
New business item number one. Motion to authorize the municipal clerk to advertise to receive bids for Pleasant Drive reconstruction.
Make a motion. Second motion.
We have a motion second on new business item number one. Any comments?
Yes, this has been a long time coming.
Yes, and Paul Decker, I told you so, this was coming soon. But yes, it's been a long time coming. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Epstein.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Rominick?
Yes.
New business item number two. Motion to authorize the following special event on public lands application pending approvals. The Hammer Run Tri-County Sportsman MC, Inc., November 2nd, 2025, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second on new business item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
No.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.